Good evening. It's 6:00 PM. The regular meeting of the Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. Mr. Burkey will offer the invocation and Ms. Smith will lead the flag salute. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we're so grateful to you, Father, just for your goodness and how you've looked down on this area and just blessed us. We thank you, Father, for that goodness. We pray, Lord, that you'd bless this meeting, be with us tonight. Give us a wisdom from on high. Lord, help us to have your mind tonight and have us to have a mind of peace and resolution. I pray, Father, that we look over all the items on the docket tonight, Father, and give them great care as we take care of them, and we pray that all will be done for your honor and glory, Lord, and we'll praise you and thank you for it all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Another roll call, please.
Commissioners Larry Burkey.
Here.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Dan Jacobs.
Here.
Reg Mally.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith.
Here.
Chairman James Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Jonathan Irvin, absent. We have a call room.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers, early speakers are limited to two minutes each. Do we have anyone requesting to speak early, Brian?
I have cards, but I don't know that any of them have requested early speaking.
Okay. The consent calendar is the first, is item number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 17th, minutes of the special meeting of February 18th. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of February 17th and minutes from the special meeting of February 18th, oh nine.
Second, then? Thank you. All right, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. The next item is conditional use permit eight oh dash two four amended three. The applicant is the Greek Orthodox Church in Lancaster. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we have quite a number of speakers on this item. Because item three cannot be heard due to noticing issues, you might want to alert anyone who's here for that item that it will not be heard this evening before we go through number two.
Okay. Thank you. So if anyone is here for the item number three, which is a conditional use permit for the construction of a car wash located at Seventeenth Street West and Avenue J, that item will be continued when we get to it. So it will not be heard this evening. So if anyone's here for that, you're certainly welcome to stay, but we won't be hearing any testimony on that tonight. So can we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, this is an item that you had originally heard at your November meeting. It was continued at that time for 90 days to the February meeting to give some time for the applicant and the nearby residents to meet and see if we could come to some resolution regarding some of the issues. At your last meeting, staff specifically requested 30 days of continuance. Given what we had learned from speaking with people on both sides of the issue, we used that time to develop ultimately our recommendation, which is before you this evening. I'm not going to spend a great deal of time on my staff report. You have before you a lot of material that includes emails and letters from both residents and representatives of the applicant. The staff report that we have prepared for you goes into quite a bit of detail outlining what we believe are the primary positions of each of the parties involved, given what we learned through a series of meetings with them. And as staff has indicated to you in the report, there are some physical issues involved with this particular request, particularly as it relates to lighting and the question of expansion of the parking lot. But it seems that in great measure, the issues revolve around the ability of the applicant to manage the onsite operation. Staff has prepared for you a list of proposed conditions. Those are certainly open to discussion in regards to whether they should remain as they are, be modified in some way, but the attempt of that is to figure out ways to require the applicant to manage properly the operation of the Hellenic Center facility such that it does not have, you know, a significant adverse effect on the surrounding area. Those conditions range from a limit on the total number of alcohol events per year, which as we discussed in November is largely set by legal ramifications. It includes requirements that they work to minimize the existence of on-street parking where they have their larger events, recognizing that there is no prohibition against people parking on a public street, and that reality, I think, needs to be taken into account. Regarding some of the other aspects, we have talked at length with the representatives of the Hellenic Center. They have revamped, in many cases, their operating and their contracting procedures. We have included within the list of conditions things that we think need to be brought to the attention of any prospective renters of the property. That includes the fact that there is a desire to restrict or to limit on-street parking, that there are time limits and hours of operation that are enforced on the site, ask them to recognize that they are, in fact, in proximity to a residential area and respect that, and indicates, you know, that if they fail to follow those guidelines, that their event has the ability to be terminated. We have also put in a requirement, I know that we've had this in place before, requiring a liaison between the church and the residents. We have modified that to some degree by saying that we want that liaison to be available during the time that events are taking place and that that liaison is available both to the residents and to the city, and that liaison has the ability to manage the onsite event, to correct problems as they are occurring. We thought that that might be a more effective way of dealing with it than simply having someone that, you know, maybe they can talk to but may not have the authority to deal with anything. There are requirements in terms of taking different steps to manage the parking. We have recommended that you add a condition mainly because of concerns raised by several of the neighbors that despite the fact that the state alcoholic beverage control agency is considering issuing them a type 47 license, that that does not entitle them to run a general restaurant or eating place on the site, that they are operating, you know, only as a facility that is open to rental but not as a place of access to the general public. We have included a recommended condition that limits all events to a maximum of 350 attendees. It would also require that onsite security personnel be in place for any event that is expected to exceed 150 attendees or would involve the sale or service of alcoholic beverages. So those are also recommended by us. You have included in your packet a photometric study. That was one of the requests that the Commission gave to us last November. The applicant complied with having that study prepared. That study indicates that many of the lighting issues can be resolved by the replacement of the existing light standard that is at the eastern end of the parking lot and replacing it with two 12-foot-high standards. We think that this is a good way to go. However, what we have indicated to you is that the applicant really needs to coordinate this with those neighbors that are on the eastern side of the site. We further are in agreement with the recommendation of the photometric study that two of the lights that are further west on the property be shielded to prevent the glare of the light across Avenue K-4. With these conditions and the others that we've noted for you, we have recommended approval of the applicant's request. That does include their request to expand the parking facility. As we've indicated to you in the past and at the November meeting, if you're going to look at attendees that are up to about 350, certain events, I don't think, are going to really impact the existing parking, but there are others that have that potential. I think that there does need to be, if we are going to require the applicant to work to limit the amount of on-street parking, that there be a provision to allow them to deal with the parking off-site in some other manner. That really concludes the report that I have for you. As I said, you have a number of speakers this evening. You have a lot of material that we've given to you, and if you have any questions as we go along, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutke. Any questions from the members before we hear the testimony?
Yes, I have one. Your recommendation is for 350 maxing out at each individual, or at the events. That includes the additional parking, correct?
I think if you were going to have 350 people, there have been events, we understand, that have had 350 people at them. They've been managed by using either off-street parking, or, excuse me, off-site parking in some way, transit, shuttling to the site, you know, those are ways to deal with it. Looking at the breakdown of events that they have had on the site, the vast majority of them fall into the small and moderate-sized event, but they do have occasional events that reach into the 300s as far as we can tell. What we really want to do, and as I said, the number, you know, is one that we looked at and thought that that's about the maximum that you could manage on the site. They had an event that is still referred to by a number of the residents that drew some 600 or 700 people one time. That created, you know, a really, really difficult situation, and I think that, you know, if you're going to effectively deal with some of the issues that have been created, there has to be a cap on the number of people. Whether you want to try to tie that to some other physical improvement or therefore, you know, be happy to answer any of your questions about that, but we're really looking at the size of the building, the number of people that you can effectively manage, and what seems to have worked and not worked in terms of the past events on the property.
Well, I get, I'm trying to tie you down here. The 350, if, because, and it's been brought up before, that there's a 30-day limit or 30-day lease on the proposed parking lot. So say, for instance, next year, they decide to cancel the lease. Is your recommendation to stick with the 350 or is it tied to the additional parking?
At this point, it's not tied to anything. Obviously, the existing or the additional parking doesn't exist. If you look at the parking requirement for, you know, dining facilities in general within the city, it is one space for every three seats. If you take the 118 onsite parking spaces and multiply that out, you get roughly 350. I'm not saying that the 350 is the greatest number to use or even that the 1 to 3 is a workable standard, but it's about the best standard that we have to go by. So that's been some of the guidance that we've had. For first, events such as weddings or things of that type, I think that probably works well. There's been some question raised as to whether it works well for events that tend to draw more one and two people per car kind of thing, and that appears to be, you know, a concern with some of the dinners or, you know, banquet-type events that they've had.
Anyone else? Since this is a continued public hearing, it's appropriate to open that hearing and listen to the speakers that you have, Mr. Lutke.
Okay. The applicant has also provided some material that is on, they asked us to have it available on the computer, so at some point, we'll try and get that open for you too if they want to go through a presentation of that kind.
So the applicant's first?
Yes.
All right.
Chris Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Especially good to see the chairman back in action in the middle seat there. My name's Chris Jones, representing the St. Constantine and Helen Church, speaking in support of the CUP as recommended by the city planning staff. The church can accept the recommendations, which we feel accommodate every reasonable local concern. I would add that the Commission should be very proud of their planning staff for driving a hard bargain. Our only question and point of clarification would be in item number nine, which is the signage. That's just applying to permanent signage. That wouldn't apply to, like, temporary parking directional signs in an event?
Are you addressing us on that?
Yes.
I'll ask the staff then to respond. Thank you.
The intent was that they don't get additional signage for the facility itself. It doesn't speak to temporary no parking or other kinds of signage that I think are noted as a possible mechanism to deal with some of the parking concerns in other conditions.
Signage on the public right-of-way is in the purview of Sheriff's Department, I assume, so that would not be an issue that we would deal with. However, onsite signage, that's a standard condition of any development, signage has to be controlled by the planning department.
Good, all right. Thank you. Anyway, we urge your support for the CUP as recommended by staff and thank the staff for, again, driving a hard bargain but taking the time to, I think, address all the reasonable concerns that have been expressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker.
Bill Cucaricos.
Welcome. Good evening. Bill Cucarico is currently the parish council president at St. Constantine and Helen. Just wanted to say, we have, since the last meeting, we did meet with the neighbors on several occasions, actually with Mr. Carl Francis, who attempted to represent all the neighbors. And those meetings did succeed in building trust between us and them. It did help open up communication channels between us and some of the neighbors. We were able to take a look, understand more closely some of their concerns versus just hearing them second-hand or third-hand, and I think it was overall a good thing. Based on those conversations and others we've had with the city staff, we made changes to our operations. We've controlled parking very well lately, and we provided some evidence in the presentation we provided to you. The lighting study we did, and there are some options. In fact, I already called our engineer, I think it was a week ago, and proposed a third option, which might actually be a little better, which is just to take the one light that stands and shorten it by five feet. In that way, we wouldn't be placing an extra light in front of another neighbor's property, which would probably cause maybe more problems in the future. We did our own noise study, which you probably have the videos of in that one, and then management has been the big key factor here. We brought in Maria Elena. We've made staff changes to affect management style, and I think we've made a great progress in managing the events. The neighbors themselves, I'm commenting that things are getting much better, and that's a very good thing from them. We spend a great deal of church funds guaranteeing that we follow the rules and that we help the neighbors enjoy their neighborhood. Security costs last year were well over $40,000 for us, and that's a sizable amount compared to anybody else in the area. The new rules that the staff has proposed are acceptable to us, and we, again, will work hard to make sure we satisfy them. In fact, we've already started down the road of making sure that we meet every single item, and we will continue to be good neighbors and continue to work and maintain the peace with our neighborhood. We are committed to making sure that that corner of our city is well managed and enjoyable by everybody. Have any questions?
Anyone have questions?
I had one question. When we met before, you had mentioned that on this additional parking, you would rather not do it. You'd rather not do the parking. What's your stance on the parking at this point? Do you need the parking? Do you feel that you still want the parking, or what would you like to do with the parking?
Well, the parking, it's, I guess what you want to go through is, in the staff report here, there's a recommended off-site parking, and to us, the off-site parking would be if we built a, like we said, if we got it approved in stages where we could build 30 instead of the full 60 slots, we could just build a small lot, and that would allow for the overflow. And there was some discussion on the size of the events. In general, the bigger events or the family-type events where you get multiple people per car, and like you saw in the pictures we sent you, if people are going to park outside of the parking lot, they're going to park on our side of the street, and that's about 30-ish cars down the side of the street. So we could move those cars off of the street and put them on a smaller lot right next to our lot in the backside of Prestige right now, and that would clean up the entire street. So yes, we would like to have at least the first 30 slots built.
The goal for the additional parking is to manage the existing size of events or to increase the size of events?
Correct. No, we can live with the 350.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Maria Elena Greto. Evening and welcome.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good to see you again. As of October '08, I became the acting manager of the Hellenic Center, and my goal was to put systems into place to efficiently manage the Hellenic Center in respect to the guests, the community, and the neighbors. Immediately, I took action, attended every event, and closely worked with the Hellenic Center board and staff members. Together, very late nights, long hours, we monitored and managed the center, and we worked on building relationships with the attendees and the community. I called a meeting with the neighbors, explaining my experience, my expertise, and intentions of the management of the center, and also invited the alcohol beverage control deputy to explain the intentions of the Hellenic Center alcohol license. Successfully, on behalf of the Hellenic Center board members, St. Constantine and Helen Church members, and myself, we are confident the center is being efficiently managed and with respect and consideration of all the opposing parties. As of February 1st, Autumn Ward is the new banquet manager. She is a respected member of the community, a family that's been in the community for a long time, excuse me, and has personal relationships in the community and has the best interests of the center, which is needed to fill this position. Also, Jose Arias. Did I say your name?
Arias.
Arias, thank you. I should know that. Is still currently the executive chef of the center. Both Autumn and Jose are managers of the Hellenic Center. They are under close direction of myself and the Hellenic Center board. I am now currently a director, so that puts those two in the position of management. On a daily basis, I am in contact with either Autumn and/or Jose regarding the daily operations of the center. Since we have been working on this, a contract is presented to all guests and vendors with the rules and regulations of the Hellenic Center and are strictly enforced. This includes parking, lighting, noise, curfew, and alcohol issues that we've had problems with in the past. Currently, a manager is onsite daily and is always onsite during an event. Evening events end at 10 o'clock, which is monitored. Events do not exceed 350 people. Security is hired at all events over 118 people. We find we like to have security there to monitor the parking situation. Events with alcohol, requested alcohol, are monitored closely, and we have extra security and strict regulations with the bar closing one hour before the end of the event. The managers and security work together on all issues, all these issues. The Hellenic Center currently operates the banquet hall as intended as a banquet hall, the banquet hall that provides excellent service, outstanding food, and the most beautiful arena to the respected local civic groups, city officials, national dignitaries, brides and grooms, and I call them antelope valiant's. Our intent is to continue to do so, to run as a banquet hall. We continue to operate as good neighbors, continue to serve the community, and continue with the original intention to serve St. Constantine and Helen Church members, and foremost, their intention and our intention is to serve God. So that's where we are in terms of the management of the Hellenic Center. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
You said you had a limit of 350 people. How long has that been since you've been there, right?
Since I've been there. We can hold more than 350 people. We can control the parking of over 350 people. We just are willing to work with the staff's recommendation of 350 people.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Good.
Next speaker, please.
Jose Arias.
Mr. Arias. Welcome.
Thank you. As Maria Elena say, I'm the executive chef of the Hellenic Center. I come from LA. I live in Long Beach. I've been a restaurant owner most of my life. I started just like everybody else, small, busboy, a little bit walk-in kitchen, tried to learn everything. I learned what I know mostly from northern Italian cuisine in San Pedro and also part of the culinary school going through USC. I cater events as large as 1,500, 2,000 for the USC college, for the homecoming for different departments of USC. I have a lot of experience being around people, large events. It's part of the environment to deal with different perspectives, different points of view, neighbors, regulations, rules to follow. I was happy to come here to the valley, even though they're kind of slow for me, coming from a big city down below. I live right here, I rent an apartment on West Hocks, and kind of hard. I just feel like any facility will be managed appropriate by having the right employees. When I started coming here, I see there was a little bit of different way to do things, a little slower than LA. LA is, for me, really fast. Parking-wise, you have to run to be the person that is going to go and park before you, or you lose it. And you're going to be driving around the block, looking for another parking spot, and then maybe it's, you know, taking too close, somebody curls the line, and you don't have enough room because you're driving one of those big catering trucks, and then there's no way for you to park. We always manage in the big city, and over here in the Antelope Valley and Lancaster, it's easier to do that. If we already know what's required, if we already know what the rule and regulations are, if we already know what needs to be done before any incident, it's always better to prevent. And that's where I come in. With my experience that I provided to the Hellenic Center, everything run smoother, easier. I have to say that the kitchen we used to run with a lot more employees, now it's only four of us. We have to work maybe a little harder, but a lot smarter. It's smarter, and it makes a big difference to prep and organize and prevent. That's where I come from, and that you learn with experience. I'm proud to be part of the Hellenic Center. We serve many different organizations, a lot of women's club that we have to deal with. And I say it like that because in the beginning, I was a little new in the community, and everybody would come and ask me like 20 questions, and why is this, why is that? But I give them a good answers. I guess they love me now. They all always come and say hi in the kitchen. I used to also, all the Greek ladies from the church, I have to believe they love me. They all always say hi to me. And again, it's a challenge for me in the beginning, but now I enjoy it. I enjoy to be part of this community. I'm looking forward to buy a house, like I said, I'm looking forward. And I convince my wife also to, don't give a hard time saying anymore, oh, you're going to drive all the way there again. Now we buy a house, we consider to come here in the summertime, my children to visit and everything. I have a long commute back to LA every day or every other day, but I really enjoy working for this facility. We have Rotary, we got pretty much every single club and hospitals go through the Hellenic Center. I believe that if we have more Hellenic Centers, or more facilities that provide a good service to this community, it'll benefit in the long run. All we need is people experienced to run it, like we are doing right now, and everybody benefit from it.
All right, sir. You know, we have a three-minute limit, however, our timer somehow is not working tonight, and we appreciate your comments. If you could wrap it up, I'd appreciate it.
I just wanted to say that we all deserve, me being only a year here in this Lancaster, I see why people want to come here. And I also was scared in the beginning when I heard that everybody was having a lot of problems by running a business. And I'm a businessperson. I own my own business for a long time, so I just wanted to kind of see if we can provide better business-friendly city, the city of Lancaster, so we can bring more business to this community and help out to develop and get bigger for the benefit of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, since we haven't engaged the timer, I guess we're wide open tonight, since it seems we've set a precedent. So I'm willing, and I'll be happy to listen to anyone tonight. But we will make a decision tonight. If you have your, if you would limit your remarks to the application that's before us, we'd appreciate it. And fair warning, the longer you go on, some people turn it off, so. All right, Mr. Luticki.
Josh Mann.
Mr. Mann.
Chairman Vos, members of the Commission, I promise to be brief. I'm here representing the Antelope Valley Board of Trade. The Board of Trade organization is a regular user of the Hellenic Center and have enjoyed the past year and a half that we've been able to hold meetings and luncheons and other functions at the center. When this was brought forward, we, as a board, thought of it as an economic development issue, in that whether the church likes it or not, they've created the city's premier meeting facility. And as such, they're helping to employ all sorts of decorators and florists and meeting planners, and it's one of those things that, it's an asset to the community, and I would just hope that you would see how important that is, that if the Hellenic Center was not able to operate, that a lot of the business would have to leave the city, and that's not good. We're trying to keep business local, so I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Roland Prince.
Yes.
Good evening, welcome.
My name is Roland Prince, and I'm from Prime Security. We are the provider of security to Greek Church and Hellenic Center. And since we started working there, we know everything. And all our security guards, we inform them and we make sure that they do a good job. And they really did a good job for the time that we started working there till now. And all the neighbors sometimes are the first, some of them are not happy with the way things are going. But as time goes on, some started congratulating us, telling us that we're really, really, really doing a good job. And until up to this time, we tried to apply all information that we had from the manager and the direction to the street. We make sure that there is no cars parking on the side of the residence. All the cars was well-controlled inside the parking lot. Even the time there is a very big crowd, we normally bring cars. Our, some of our guards will be the driver. We normally take the visitors from another side to the property, and we make sure that there is no noise, because we know that the resident doesn't like noise. We all know what they want. Sometimes, when there is slow, the residents normally come out, talk with our security guards. For me, I'm a supervisor, but I work there as a security guard by myself. So I hear them, I know the way they feel, and we do a good job for them to appreciate us. Until this time, we control all the events, both the church and the center. We make sure that everything is in good place. There is no car in this side of the residence, and the roads are very, very clear. Sometimes, we opt to seek security guards. Sometimes, even when we are three, four, we make sure that everything is okay, even if it's one person. We make sure that everything is in place. And they hire security according to the amount of the visitors. And since that time, we did a very great job. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
I just had one question. When did you start doing security for Hellenic?
For me?
Yeah. When did your company start doing security for Hellenic? When did you start?
If I'm not mistaken, at least it's getting like a year and six months now.
So about a year and a half.
A year and a half, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Cecil Swetland.
And welcome, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Staff, and folks in the audience. I am coming here tonight. Name is Cecil Swetland. I'm a CEO of Desert Christian Schools, past Chairman of the Antelope Valley Chambers of Commerce, and somebody who attends events at the Hellenic Center at least four to five times every month, and often months, it may be as many as 10, during the day, after hours. And I just want to communicate to all of you the significance and the importance of this venue for the residents of the Antelope Valley, whether it's service clubs, Chambers of Commerce events, as Josh has just mentioned, Board of Trade event, school events that our school puts on. In about six weeks, we're getting ready, I'm President of the School of Education Club at Cal State University, Bakersfield. We are bringing in one of the premier young educators in the world. Her name is Erin Gruell. And as we were looking for a place to have, it was very difficult to find the kind of venue, the right size, the right surroundings that we wanted to have, and the folks at the Hellenic Center were able to make that possible. I realize you have lots of decisions before you every single meeting. This one is very, very important for lots of organizations here in the Antelope Valley. We have a dearth of these types of facilities. We need many more conference facilities, breakout rooms. We need more of those here in the Valley, lots more, many more feet of space, not less. So we appreciate you giving your kind consideration to the folks at the Hellenic Center and all the people that utilize the facilities.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Henry Hurns.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This is Chairman, and to all of the Commissioners, to our staff, and to everyone else, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf and in support of the Hellenic Center. It just so happened that I've been in the Valley almost 44 years now, and for many years, all we had is a small place up on Sierra Highway, and then, of course, we had the old fairground, a little bit over there. Then later on, of course, the fairground relocated, and I guess what I want to say is that while sitting on the council, I had an opportunity to be there for groundbreaking and also for the opening. We've had funerals there, the lame funeral, and other things that has happened there in the Hellenic Center. So I'm just trying to fix in my mind, what would we really look like here in the city of Lancaster if we did not have the Hellenic Center? I've been there on many, many occasions, as Mr. Swetland mentioned. I don't go as many times now as I used to, but quite a few times while I was sitting as the Council, and still do. And I've been there many times when people who come from out of the community come to a function there, and you can see them just walk in and say, wow, where did this come from? So I want to say to you, I really am totally in support of this. We're talking about jobs, we're talking about dollars and cents to our city, we're talking about good food, and I enjoy good food. And it's also a very beautiful place, so I really urge you, with all my heart, to vote yes on this condition of use permit. Thank you for the privilege of being before you.
Thank you, sir. Another speaker?
I apologize in advance if I butcher this. You... Okay.
For the record, would you say your name, please, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Uche.
Welcome, sir.
S for uniform, C for charlie, H for tell, E for echo. I used to work for Prime Security on the property. We started as far back as 2007, if I'm not mistaken. I was the operation manager of Prime Security, but right now I have my own company. I am the person that, you know, make the schedule and send people to the parking lots in order to control the traffic in that area. When we started, it was a little bit difficult, but at the time, the neighbors appreciated If we have larger events, what we usually do is to pack in the nearby space that is at the park, it's called Prestige. So they take, we, they ask the visitors to pack over there, and they come over. Sometimes, we hire buses in order to bring them over there. Since I started working there, I have had some of the neighbors, they come to us and congratulate us, and sometimes they offer us water in the summer. Do you need some water? Do you need this? I say, no, we have enough. I have never noticed any problem. We have never had any incidents since we started working over there. The security has been very good, we control everything, and nobody's allowed, if there is any event that is going to be alcohol consumption, nobody's, there's two security officers on the gate, you cannot pass through the double door with a glass, whether it is water or not. We don't care what it is, but you cannot cross the outside. All the alcohol prevalent must consume inside. Even if you have water, we assume it is alcohol, you have to stay inside and take it. We don't allow anybody to come outside the gate with glass of water. So I believe that everything is okay, and the neighbors appreciate us. As I said, several of them come to us and offer stuff, and they thank us for our good job. Thank you. Bye-bye.
There may be questions. Hold on, please.
I do have a quick question about security, and hopefully you can answer this, but if not, I'm sure Mr. Kukurikos can. It was stated that with 118 attendees, that's when they bring in security. Does the number of security personnel grow as the size of the event grows?
Definitely. Actually, even less than 118. I remember there was an event that was about 100 people. I was there to provide security, and as you ask, if they are more than, it depends, if it is 100, you're going to provide two security. If it's 150, maybe three or four, depending on the type of event. If it's juveniles, the teenagers that are coming, we have more security, because we have to control them very well. If it is adults, all these things are being considered, and the number of security guards that are going to be there. And I, as the operation manager, I'm always there to monitor what is going on.
So if there's 350 attendees, how many security personnel are you...
If there's 350, we do it 50/50, seven, seven securitys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do you have another speaker, Mr. Luticki?
Those are all the slips that I have marked in favor, Mr. Chairman. I have several marked as opposed.
All right.
Carl Francis.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. I have a real short statement here, if I can get in in three minutes, so I may have wasted my time shortening it up. I'm grateful to the Planning Commission for digesting and considering the public expressions of concern with regard to our neighborhood Greek Church, something for which I think everyone in our community is justifiably proud. In one such note to Brian, I suggested that having served in several instances as both Planning Director and Professor of Planning, if I were inclined and authorized to do so, I could quickly fix this. I apologize for the arrogance of that statement.
Excuse me, sir. Just, excuse me, sir. If you'd, hold on, we've got a little conflict behind us, and I don't know where it is.
I hope that's not an animal.
They're big mice.
I can talk loud.
These are big mice, I think, I don't know.
Okay.
Hold on a second, sir. Our city engineer went out and pulled his fingernails out or something.
I'm going to go over three minutes now, you know.
That's quite all right. He won't be the first, nor probably the last. All set?
I hope so.
Please, please continue, sir.
A chance to apologize again for the arrogance of that statement. And offering instead this simple solution. The sole issue here is the initiation and expansion of essentially commercial activities in the guise of church activities. This was clearly not the intent of the original permit issued to the church. Ours is a residential area not suited to such activities. Proper planning and zoning should have seen to that. For whatever reason, it failed to do so. Yet, we are where we are. To set the matter right...
I hope so.
Please, please continue, sir.
A chance to apologize again for the arrogance of that statement. And offering instead this simple solution. The sole issue here is the initiation and expansion of essentially commercial activities in the guise of church activities. This was clearly not the intent of the original permit issued to the church. Ours is a residential area not suited to such activities. Proper planning and zoning should have seen to that. For whatever reason, it failed to do so. Yet, we are where we are. To set the matter right, or as right as it ever will be, I suggest the following. Permit no further expansion, nor the circumstances for expansion, of this commercial activity, not the church, the commercial activity, the Hellenic Center. That means do not expand the parking or licensing to encourage such expansion. Simply put, enough is enough. For some, too much, but let that be. Set reasonable, considerate to all parties, and enforceable standards by which the church can conduct its necessary business without increased or undue burden on the neighborhood. Then enforce those standards. That's been a problem, enforcement. Clearly, this would include strict limits on the size of all commercial activities and events. Let me be clear, commercial activities and events are those designed and executed to make money. That's not what our community thought they were getting when this thing was initially permitted. Finally, encourage the church to follow through on the agreements Maria Elena Grotto and myself on the management of these commercial events and activities. Maria Elena and I had a very good conversation about this. I spoke, not as a representative of anybody, just as a person who lived across the street. But Maria Elena and I talked about it, and we found that there really was no basis for conflict. If she managed that facility, as they seem to be doing now beautifully, there shouldn't be a problem, and I don't expect there will be a problem. If these agreements are honored and executed, and if they remember, if they remember what the agreements were, and if proper planning and zoning rules are set and followed, and it seems to me the Planning Department is trying to do that, if these are followed, there should be no further problems for the Greeks and their church. And that's the issue. These folks have a problem, because they have infuriated their neighbors from time to time. And so that we need to take care of, and with Maria Elena in charge, I think it's taken care of. I'm assuming she'll continue to do the fine work that she's done. If they are not respected, then this discord will surely continue, and it will come back on your desks over and over and over again. In addition, I would make this suggestion to my good friends in our neighborhood church. I strongly encourage you not to indulge yourselves, nor to allow your representatives to indulge themselves in further threats and other hostile acts that do nothing but aggravate the problem. And we all know what we're talking about here. You have good and tolerant neighbors. Treat them with the respect they deserve. I'm sure they will do the same. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to this issue. I trust we can now put all this behind us.
Thank you, Francis.
Any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
I should say, Dr. Francis, I beg your pardon. Thank you.
Well, that is true.
Yes, I have a question.
You have questions? Go ahead.
Dr. Francis, am I to assume then that the recommendations made by staff, all of them, are okay with you?
I haven't seen them, but I will come down and take a look at them. They're okay, aren't they, Brian? I think he's the professional. He should have gotten this right.
We're supposed to be voting on them tonight.
I'll go along with Brian. If he says that he's got it together, then I would suggest that we vote on it. I'm standing opposed for a couple of reasons. One is that I see no reason to expand parking. I think that is a big mistake. I think the bill has indicated that, that they don't really feel like spending the money for it. I think the parking has been the only instrument that's kept the thing under control. There's a worrisome fear in the neighborhood that if the parking is expanded, it will just mushroom into bigger and bigger and bigger events. I don't know, I know you folks weren't altogether comfortable with three hundred and fifty. I can say that I think the neighborhood probably is not comfortable with three hundred and fifty either for the same reason, and so maybe that strikes in the middle, and I think that's what Francis is trying to do.
Dr. Francis, I appreciate if you'd address the commission, please, rather than engage the audience. Thank you.
Well, when I was talking to the folks in the church, I thought I better talk directly to them, instead of having them look at my behind.
All right. You satisfied, Dan? You want...
So I'm, you're okay with them, or you want to reduce the number for three hundred and fifty?
You know, I can't, you know, I really can't speak with any authority on this. I, I suggest that we rely on the good judgment of the Planning Department to do a proper job. If they haven't done a proper job, you'll hear about it soon enough. In other words, if they've made a mistake, they're held accountable.
I've never known.
I'm just a neighbor. I'm just a guy who lives across the street, and I'm not accountable, in this circumstance, for that judgment. I don't know if three hundred and fifty is a good number. I do believe that extending the parking is a bad idea, but I could be wrong. As I say, I, I, I used to do this for a living. I'm not doing it for a living anymore, and I am, I have a great deal of confidence in Brian. I, I think he's worked very hard on this, and I assume that his judgment is sound. But if it isn't, it's going to fall on his shoulders and yours.
Ooh, that's a tough one, then. I would assume that everything is correct, since Mr. Ludick doesn't make a whole lot of mistakes. So if you're agreeing with Mr. Ludick, then you're okay with the recommendations.
I'm trusting his professional judgment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Francis.
Dr. Francis, one quick thing I would add. You do realize that Mr. Ludick has recommended to expand the parking, correct?
I realize that, and I take issue with that.
Okay. So is your, is your sole disagreement with the parking having to do with the fear of the events growing in size?
That's right.
Okay. And if there were events that were three hundred and fifty people, and so they were within their size, but everybody drove one car?
Right.
Then we'd have a problem with the existing parking, correct?
Yes, I think that's correct. The, when this thing was initially set up, there was no limit on how big these things could be, and the only thing that limited was the size of the parking. And so the neighbors look at parking as the only control in the size of the events. Now, that's no longer the case with the new proposition. So maybe the parking is not an issue, but I will say this, that if we see bulldozers out there expanding the parking, I can, I can assure you, the neighbors are going to be very nervous about that, thinking that this is something that's going to grow and grow and grow and envelop the entire community.
I understand your perspective. With that being said, would you agree that it's easier to control a head count than it is a car count?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have another speaker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ann Dur.
Ms. Dur.
Thank you, Chairman, Vows, Commissioners. My name is Ann Dur. I live in Lancaster, California, just at the corner down the street from the, from the Greek Orthodox Church, St. Constantine's in Hell. My good neighbor Charles Wordsworth was not able to be here tonight, and I know you have a message from him, and I want to please ask that you read that carefully and include that as part of the information for tonight's hearing. One of the things I would like to say is that Mr. Ludick is the one who stated back in 2003 that we did not want to create a situation of a rental hall for public use in a residential area. And everything I have heard here tonight is about exactly ensuring the success of a high-volume, high-potential, commercial business rental hall, in fact, a banquet hall, that according to Ms. Maria Elena Grotta, is operating as intended as a banquet hall. And the very words banquet hall imply rental. When I hear of comparing it to commercial ventures for success, you're having a commercial enterprise competing directly with other commercial enterprises in the valley. You want to encourage growth of commercial business in the valley? Then to create commercial enterprises under the auspices of a church social hall, as it was originally permitted, create the wrong impression, that people can come here, permit for one thing, and then create something else. Almost, you know, to me, it becomes invasive, you know, cancer starts with one cell, too. So when you heard Dr. Francis's comments about, yes, we are concerned about the parking being, if you add more parking, and then the next step, and then the next step, because everything that has happened so far has been repeatedly in violation of their existing conditional use permit, we still stand very nervous about that. In Mr. Wordsworth's letter to you, he did indicate, and I concur, that we should not have events of greater than two hundred people at this location. I'd also like to add that any precedent set by their use of over, of up to, I think it was ninety-day-use alcohol permits to facilitate the type and nature of events they hold should not be considered as a viable foundation for precedent, in view of the fact that that in and of itself violates the ABC's normal policy of twenty-four such permits in a year. It's these large events that typically are where alcohol is served that invade our neighborhood. I will agree with Carl that over the last couple of months, things seem to have improved. I don't know if that's because they haven't booked these events, or if they haven't been able to procure alcohol permits. I do not know. If they've cut back on that, that's, that's a good thing. I have not added to my list of violations. However, I have observed a couple, but I myself waited to see if any of the other neighbors commented to me, and then determined not to put them on the list. With that being said, you know, all I can say in conclusion is I'm not in favor of expansion of the parking area, and neither is, I know, Mr. Wordsworth. And the limit, and the strict control of the use of alcohol in that area would go a long ways to controlling this. I still contend that this Hellenic Center is a commercial operation that has more benefited the citizens of this city as a replacement for a commercial venture, and is in unfair competition to the other commercial businesses that compete for similar venues. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. There may be some questions. Anyone?
You mentioned the last couple of months. Has it been two months that it's been better, or since the meeting in November, or since Maria Elena came over? What, what do you, what's the gauge for...
Well, it was much quieter in December than I expected. I don't know what happened to all their holiday bookings, but it was much quieter in December than January and February. There've been a few instances, but not nearly like it was before.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Ludick?
I have one more card, Mr. Chairman. Rich Anderson.
Dr. Anderson, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Richard Anderson, and I own a house directly across the street from the Hellenic Center. And I'm glad security's here tonight, because one of the things I'd like to address is the, the alcohol permit that they're, they're wanting. And some time ago, me and my wife were sitting there watching TV, and here's all these people talking outside our door. Well, I open the door, and here's five or six young people on my block wall drinking and smoking stuff that wasn't tobacco. So it's great that the security people are here to see that they don't have the total control that they, they're, they're trying to lead you to believe. And as a community, we, we feel real strong about having these, these type of things going on in, in our community, especially at nighttime. If you start having, allowing to drink and outside of the building, next thing you know, you're going to have other problems. And if I would have gone out there and confronted them, who knows what would have happened? And so on that note, I, I don't want to, I, I want to see this alcohol permit not granted at all, because here we are, we're talking about a, a church in a, in a neighborhood community having an alcohol permit. It just doesn't seem right. I have, I have noticed in the last few months that the, that the Hellenic Center has calmed down on their activities. We've been real happy about that, and, and if they would have complied with that since the beginning with the CUP eighty-two-four, we probably wouldn't be standing here tonight. But as it is, the, the city, they, they lack the control over them, and even from the very beginning of the, two years ago, when they gave the, the CUP, they just violated it almost on a daily basis. And without the, with, without the direct, a control of the Planning Commission, we feel that as a, as a community, that they're just going to continue to start doing that again. If they, there's no, there's no violations, if there's no monetary, monetary fines imposed on them to make it worth the, to make it so that, you know, they, they'll, they'll know that they can't do that, that we need to, that that's what the, I think the city needs to do to them, to make sure that they comply with the CUP and, and stay within their bounds. Thank you.
Hang on a second. Mr. Anderson, there may be some questions. Thank you.
You did state that in the past several months, it has calmed down, like Ms. Dur mentioned, and that the five kids on your block wall, are you sure they were from an event at the Hellenic Center, or could they have been neighborhood kids?
Absolutely. I seen them walk across the street back to the Hellenic Center.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hang on. Well, you may ask the question. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, when did that incident occur? Was that within the last five months?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir. Any more speakers, Mr. Ludick? No cards?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
The applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal if they care to take it, but I would ask only one speaker then, please, in rebuttal, if you care to take it.
A couple things. I have a meeting with Mr. Wordsworth when he get returns from vacation, was regarding the lighting study that we talked, I talked to him, so we're going to talk with him about that. We have a crime study. Let's see, we had one serious crime in 2008, a stolen car on the 2800 block of K-4, which was recovered by the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you. Assailant confessed visiting friends at the College Park Apartments across the street on the 30th Street, and apartments are a constant source of crime in the area. So we believe that the crime that has happened in the area is not occurring due to the Hellenic Center events. So do we have any other questions?
There may be some.
Okay.
Any? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Good.
All right, then, since there are no further speakers, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection, and to consider the staff recommendation before us. If anyone cares to offer a motion, or if you, if you have comments you'd like to make or questions of staff, we can do those, and then consider a motion if you care to offer one.
I'd just like to get clarity on the parking situation. Again, the parking is a month-to-month lease, correct? So it could end at any time.
Our understanding of, of the lease agreement, should they build that additional parking area, is that, is that the, the owner of that property, Prestige Care, has the right to cancel the, the lease with thirty days of notice?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Condition ten, the operating hours, the operating hours of the church in Hellenic Center shall be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. You had a condition for the sale of alcohol before, and I, I'm not sure what the time was. Do you have a separate time from closing with the sale of alcohol?
No, actually, we, we don't have any separate, separate condition on, on alcohol sales. We, we assume that it would be limited to those same hours, although the applicant indicated that in the case of, I guess, events that have alcohol, they close the, the bar some period of time prior to the, the close of the event. That's not included within, within the proposed conditions.
With the permitting process of alcoholic beverages is under the purview of the State Alcohol Beverage Control Board, right? We... We, the commission has the authority to set parameters, but we do not issue licenses, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I mean, if you wanted to make it an hour and a half, I suppose you could.
I was, I was just asking what their policy is.
And their contract?
The public hearing is closed. And we appreciate your comments, but the public hearing is closed.
I was asking a question, what their policy was.
Whose policy?
The church.
Then we'd have to reopen the public hearing and do that. It would be appropriate to ask staff to respond if they know.
My note indicates that they close the bar one hour prior to the close of the event. That is what I had written down as my note on their testimony.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? I had a couple of questions about the lighting, which seems to be somewhat open, although I've read the staff report. However, the lighting changes that are proposed, covered by the photometric plan, is not really spelled out in the, in the conditions of approval for this conditional use permit. However, under Resolution 0616, which is standard condition for approval of development within the city, there is a standard for lighting plans. So I'm assuming that any proposed, anything on this site, as it currently sits, if in fact the parking lot is expanded, that there will be a review by staff. And if the recommendation by staff is to change the parking lot lights in some form or fashion, that the applicant would be obliged to conform.
That's correct. Couple of different situations you've described there, but on the existing parking area, the intent was that whatever, that they used that photometric study that they did as a basis for the ultimate solution on the parking lot lighting. One of the applicant's representatives indicated that they have a meeting scheduled with one of the neighbors, and that's really what staff would prefer that they do is to come to some mutually acceptable modification on that existing lot. If they were to be approved for expansion, staff's intent would be to ask for an additional photometric study for the additional parking area and that that be used as the basis for establishing heights and locations of those, of those light poles.
Well, it's all well and good that folks can get together and come to the decision, but the ultimate authority of any change in configuration on that site lies with the city and with city planning and city engineering and all the other entities of the city, right?
Yes. And the condition indicates so.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
And as I understand, the, what you explained earlier was that the parking is figured at three per car, correct? And I think that's probably where some of our problems have come in.
Yeah, that is the, that's the best standard that we've got in our zoning code to rely on. If you, if you use that, in theory, you could, you could put 354 attendees or 354 seats in the facility. As you've heard, not only this evening, but certainly on previous evenings and in the writing, that doesn't appear to always be the case. However, it's also hard or difficult to tell because I've had neighbors tell me that in some cases, they've got people that have parked on the street when there is still parking available in the parking area, and it seems to be a matter of convenience more than, you know, an actual physical lack of parking, so.
So we do have the authority if, to set the limit of attendees based on the current parking and possibly consider raising that limit if there were to be additional parking? Is that correct?
Under, under the general provisions in the zoning code on conditional use permits, you as a commission have the, the right to set what you feel is the appropriate parking requirement for a use subject to use permit.
All right. Thank you. Anything further from anyone? So a motion would be in order. What's your pleasure, folks?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 0905, approving conditional use permit number 80-24 amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Do we have any further discussion?
I would just like to comment that I'm appreciative of the staff addressing the needs of the community as well as the needs of Hellenic Center. Brian, I think that you and the staff have done a great job at addressing the issues. I feel comfortable with it. I think the head count is the most serious thing, and I think that if the neighbors trusted everybody involved to keep the head count at that 350, I think that we would have contentment in the neighborhood also. So I think that it just comes down to Hellenic Center. Do a great job of management like you've done in the last two months, do that for the next two decades, and I think you got an out.
I thank you. Anything further? We're ready to vote? Oh, go ahead.
This is a very hard vote for me because I'm a tremendous fan of the Hellenic Center, but I'm gonna vote against this because I'm not going to vote for that increased parking lot. I just don't feel comfortable, and I'm voting for that because I feel badly for the neighbors. I totally understand what you're saying. I think Maria Elena's done a tremendous job and has proven that the Hellenic Center is attempting to follow the rules. And I'd like to see a little more time that they continue to try to prove to the neighbors that they're really trying to do a good job and be good citizens in the neighborhood before we allow them the expanded parking that they would like to have. I also have real concerns about, you know, actually building that parking lot and then finding out three months later that they don't have access to that parking lot. I'm no fan of, you know, that short-term arrangement, but that's just, I guess, the Scotch in me, the, you know, the Keith heritage coming out. But I just, I just would, it's kind of the politician, one side of me, helping the neighbors and the other side, voting for the Hellenic Center. So I just have to vote now on this tonight.
Thank you. Anything further from anyone? Prepare to vote? Please vote. All right. Thank you. The next item is Conditional Use Permit 0705. Mr. Jacobs?
Accuse me.
You want to? Mr. Jacobs is recusing himself on this matter, even though it's a continuance. So the public hearing is open on this item, which is a recommendation to continue this item for one month to our regular meeting of April 20th, 2009. All right. That's the recommendation, right?
Yes. Notice was not properly given in the newspaper for publication. The applicant was notified of that. We will intend to bring this onto the April agenda.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Could I have a motion, please?
I move to continue Conditional Use Permit Number 07-05 to the April 20th, 2009 Planning Commission Meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion passes 5-0, and the item will be on the April agenda.
Right. And you will make note that Mr., yeah, Commissioner Jacobs is recusing himself on that. All right. Thank you. Welcome back. All right. The next item is a new public hearing on Conditional Use Permit 0901. And the hearing is open. Could we have a staff report, please?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, this is a site and a use that you actually considered a conditional use permit for back in January. At that time, the approval, you know, was for the sale of alcohol in conjunction with a restaurant use. That applicant has come back to us and is now before you. They have indicated a desire to amend a couple of things in regards to that. First, they are looking at obtaining a Type 47 license instead of a Type 41. Type 47 is a general on-sale license. They are also looking at, or requesting, the addition of entertainment use several nights a week. Both of those changes under the city's alcohol ordinance require or constitute what's considered a major modification. As a result, they need to be back in front of you, getting your approval on it. What the applicant is attempting to do is to set up a situation where the restaurant is still the predominant use. However, for, I believe, up to, up to three nights a week, and particularly, I think on Friday and Saturday, they would like the option to have entertainment that's more nightclub-style entertainment within the facility. As we've indicated to you, our primary concern with this, and this is really come about as, as part of our discussion with the Sheriff's Department, is ensuring that we, we limit the potential for underage drinking to occur in conjunction with this, with this operation. This is based upon a couple of other instances in town where the Sheriff's Department has noted these same problems, where you tend to get a mixed crowd. Therefore, what we've indicated to you is that should you look at approving this, we would recommend a condition, at least initially, that would restrict anyone from under the age of 21 from being allowed in what's referred to on the plans as Section A after 9:30, when it becomes a nightclub-type environment. What the applicant is looking at doing in the long term is creating some additional sections within the building that they could continue to serve the restaurant side of the operation during the time that the nightclub events are occurring. That is gonna require, as we've indicated to you in both the staff report and the conditions, some physical changes to the property that actually involve creating some barriers. For the time being, I think it's the intent of the applicant that they would run the restaurant operation until a certain time, as indicated, and at that point, they would no longer run the restaurant on those evenings when they are looking at having some kind of nightclub-style entertainment. The Sheriff's Department has reviewed what staff's recommendation is. They have been satisfied with the conditions, and more importantly, I think that they feel if there were to be problems because of the conditional use permit being in force on the site, that we have some recourse. Some of these other places that I've described don't, at the current time, have any, any active conditional use permit on them because they predate the, the adoption of the latest alcohol ordinance. So we have recommended to you approval of the applicant's request with the conditions as listed. I will try and answer any questions that you might have on it. Hopefully, if you're asking specifics about the operation, the applicant can fill you in on that.
All right, sir. Thank you. Is the applicant or his representative here that cares to address the commission? If you care to address the commission, please come to the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, councilors and city councils. My name is Jacob, Jacob Hussein. I'm the owner of the Casablanca Restaurant. It's Mediterranean food, and I have some entertainments, like some event. Actually, it's not really a nightclub is going to be. It's going to be some event sometimes a month, but for, for that reason, that's why I applied for conditional permit, to have a permit for that event if I'm going to have it during the month or during the time. It's going to be Friday and Saturday and sometimes during the week.
Have you had an opportunity to review the conditions that staff has recommended? And do you concur with them?
Yeah.
All right. I have a couple of questions. Do we have a site plan of the interior of the restaurant on visual up there?
Yeah, I think, yes.
From my chair, what you, the layout that you have doesn't demonstrate to me how you intend to control the clientele, the under and over 21 clientele on this site plan. Maybe you can explain to me and to the rest of the commission how you intend to do that?
Yeah. If you look at the plan, there's Section A and Section B. What is the Section B? That's what's going to be for the under 21.
How do they get in there?
They get in there from the side, the side door. You have, it's outside the restaurant. It's in the side.
So the fire door that goes into the parking lot to the rear? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. The side door is, is go to the parking lot. And when they come in, they come in from the side door. I'm going to build in, in the hallway, go right away to the back, to the Section B. It's in the plan. There's, there is a wall that's going to be between Section B and Section A. And that, that hallway, we can, it's go to the outside hallway to the parking lots.
So is staff satisfied with that explanation?
The applicant has talked to us about this. I, I think the way that we would have to look at this is that if the applicant chose to move to a Phase 2, which is really what he's talking about, we would need to, to really explore whether or not there needs to be a little bit more modification out there to what he's got. I don't, I should say, from a staff perspective, we don't have an objection to the idea of people being able to enter from the other side because there is parking area out there, and it actually might be an effective way to do it because then you, you wouldn't have as much probability of the mix between people who are there for the entertainment and people who are there for the restaurant. But I think you're gonna have to have more than just the existing doorway that's there. You're gonna, you're gonna have to bring it to a more commercial access appearance, I believe, than what, you know, it currently is.
So the, so I can continue, the conditions that are outlined in the recommendation and the CUP then gives staff the authority to make the ultimate decision as to the layout and operation as for this particular applicant?
Yes, within, within the, it's kind of a, a condition that says this is the result you have to achieve, which is separate entrance and physical barrier separating A and B.
So for instance, if the structure, structural element of that rear wall was not sufficient to accommodate a double-door entry or something of that effect, then it would be the applicant's responsibility to reconstruct the building to meet that requirement if you should impose it?
Yeah, or to, to figure out another way. We also talked about the possibility of an entrance on the same side as the current restaurant is, but the possibility of having to, to create a demising wall or some other physical barrier that would allow a separate entrance. physical barrier that would allow a separate entrance.
Assuming the Fire Marshal would agree.
Yes, certainly. They have to meet all the building and fire codes.
So you, you understand that this, this appro, if this is approved tonight, it's, you just don't start tomorrow and start an operation? You still have a lot of work to do?
Yeah, but I'm not going to operate Section B now. I'm already in Section A. If I want to operate Section B, it's not ready to, to operate it. It's still, it's, there's no concrete in Section B. It's empty, empty dirt, you know? We can't use it now. I mean, it's not ready to use Section B. That the only things I have, I have Section A to use now. That's in the future way, you know? For Section A.
You know, there's a time limit on a conditional use permit? There's a time limit on implementation of a conditional use permit?
Yeah, no, in that case, I apply for another conditional use permit for Section B as a matter. I mean, when I, when I need to use it.
Frankly, I, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here considering a site plan and a floor plan, which it, it's certainly not, it's, at the very least, it's minimally professionally prepared. And I, I would caution you on an expectation of trying to implement this particular floor plan in your building without some professional assistance because staff will certainly require that. So I just want to be sure you understand. I mean, this is going to take time, cost some money. Want to make sure?
I understand, yeah.
Okay, okay. Very good. All right. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Well, one quick question before you leave. If I remember how this building is set up, so, so what you've got is you've got people coming in from, if we're looking at this, from the top section from that parking lot into Section B, the under 21. And then you have other people coming into Section A from the other side of the building. Is that correct?
It's Section A. You see the two, two doors we had for Section A?
That's the entrance to Section A.
That's the entrance we are in now. And we have another entrance from the side, that the one later on, if I want to use Section B, I'm going to build a wall from there, all the way to there and get into the Section B.
So am I incorrect, or if somebody parks in the section, in front of Section A and they want to go into Section B, they have to get in their car and drive around the building to the other parking lot? Is that correct?
No, no, no. That's, that, it has a battery, like it has a large battery. The parking lot, it's the front of those two doors.
So the hallway allows them to go around the building and come back?
Yeah, that's the hallway between the, the.
I think what you're asking, Larry, is, the answer to your question is yes. They, they would have to avail themselves of an opportunity to enter the building from the west side somehow, based on a design that staff's going to approve, maybe.
Okay.
That'd be fair.
If they, yes, if they wish to exercise Phase Two, which is kind of what we're, we're discussing here.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything further from anyone? All right, thank you, sir. Without objections, appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion on Conditional Use Permit 0901.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 0907 approving Conditional Use Permit Number 0901.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Anything further from anyone before we move on? We can vote, please.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. All right, Director's announcements. Mr. Ludiki?
I guess the most important thing, a week from tonight, your next special meeting regarding the general plan revision, we have provided to you earlier today, a, an electronic copy of the notice that was published in the paper regarding that. If you have any questions on material or, or anything, feel free to give us a call between now and then.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything from the members? I do have one report to give, if you'll bear with me for a moment. A couple of weeks ago, the mayor asked all of the commissions to meet, their chairpersons to meet and discuss their accomplishments and goals. With the able assistance of Mr. Ludiki, we prepared our planning commission accomplishments and goals, which I'll share with you now. Pass one down to staff. In the eight months that we've been seated, we have considered the general plan housing element revisions. We've done the downtown specific plan and environmental impact report. We have looked at the overall general plan revisions on a, quite a series of meetings and we will have one next Monday. We've reviewed quite a number of development applications, which you have in front of you, including three major projects, environmental impact reports on three major projects on the west side. And you folks have conducted public hearings on that matter. I was absent. We've also approved a conditional use permit on a commercial project on 30th West and Avenue K, as well as one on 20th West and Avenue K. On routine matters, we've conducted 28 public hearings on maps, another 15 on new tentative maps. We've conducted 10 public hearings on conditional use permits, including four churches, a car wash, which has been continued a number of times, and five restaurants serving alcoholic beverages. We had a couple of public hearings on proposed cargo container ordinances and made a recommendation to City Council on that. We've conducted public hearings on street improvement ordinance and made a recommendation and we've heard previously and again tonight, the Hellenic Center, and taken action. Our goals and projected timeframes, so we underst, my estimate of our, understanding of our timeframes is that we will complete the review this next Monday of the general plan recommendations and then we will commence public hearings in April on the general plan. Those public hearings, we will receive testimony and depending on staff's recommendation, I'm sure we'll have at least one hearing, maybe more, depending on the public interest. I might point out that the staff's recommendation that they gave us a couple of months ago, the white binder, the three-inch white binder, if you folks will come prepared next week, that we can make a final determination on that, on that, make recommendations to staff at least, if there's any changes you wish to make. And then there'll be additional information that will be given by the public and staff at that meeting. The upcoming work that we'll have, once the general plan is adopted and our recommendation for the general plan adoption proceeds to the City Council, after that and is ultimately adopted by the City Council, then we will start on zoning conformance project, which will take at least six months, maybe longer. And then the development codes of the city will take probably a year and a half, which will be in our purview to review and make recommendations on. And also, there's a private specific plan request out on the west side, a couple of them, Lancaster Highlands and Avante. So we will continue to keep a schedule that we've kept in the past and been very busy. And I want to point out to you as well that the mayor was very complimentary of this group in total for your dedication and commitment and interest and he's very appreciative of the work that this commission does and certainly of staff in keeping us on task and busy. So I just wanted to thank you all for your participation. All right, then we stand adjourned to a special meeting of March, what is it? 23rd, March 23rd, here at 6:00.
Mr. Chairman? A public business from the floor?
Oh.
I, I don't have any speaker cards, but there may be people who want to talk.
Well, Mr. Saccharius may have something to say. Public business from the floor. If anyone has an, an interest in speaking to the commission on any matter not on the agenda, any public business, you're given an opportunity now to do that. You need to fill out a speaker's card and we'll allow you to speak for three minutes. Anyone? Okay. Now we can adjourn till next Monday at 6:00 PM in this chamber. Thank you.